Lord, assist by Holy Spirit of Council all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Ms. How? Mr. Carlomel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Here.
Mr. Vadne?
Yeah.
Mr. Bureau God?
Here. Open forum, pursuant to round number forty-two dash forty-six dash six. Mr. Ojia, you're the only one on the list.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Douglas Ojia, and I live in 1984 Providence, Rhode Island. I just wanted to speak quickly on item D on the whole business council rules regarding live streaming of meetings. The governor and state leadership has failed to take action upon updating the open meetings act, and it should have already been adjusted to allow slash require remote participation. At a minimum, to allow it for good and welfare or any issue outside of a public hearing. In researching this further, I saw that the state AG issued guidance on this matter back in July, when the executive board had ended, which stated, although the OMA does not require public bodies to permit public comment or to permit remote participation by members of the public, public bodies are free to do so and are encouraged to do so when they find that it would advance the purpose of the OMA. Having previously served on the council, it's important to allow people an opportunity to speak on town matters, regardless of location. It would be my hope that this council would continue to allow residents that opportunity, and not doing so would be a step backwards. Finally, anything with a potential for a bond, such as Halliwell, in addition to planning and zoning, should be streamed to provide transparency and accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. CJ, is anybody out in Zoom that would like to be heard for open forum?
Let's see, anybody raise their hands, just present.
Okay. I'll ask one more time, does anybody out there, and if the viewers right now that would like to be heard of open forum at this time? Please raise your hand and be called upon. Anybody? Okay, move on. North Smithfield Town Council sitting as the board of license. Discussion of council board other than action on solicitation licenses renewed by Anderson. I'd like to just do these one at a time. If you want to go back in, the first license request that we have is for Hernan Avilia. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Mr. President, Mr. Vadne?
Make a motion that we approve the general business license for Hernan Avila, working for renewal by Anderson. It has been signed off by all bodies necessary.
Thank you. That's a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
The next one we have is also for renewal by Anderson is Anthony Hero.
Mr. President?
Ms. How?
I'd make a motion to approve the general business license for Anthony Hero for renewal by Anderson and approved by all necessary parties.
Thank you. We have the motions. There are second. Second. We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
The next one we have is Oscar, is it Slute Garcia? Also for renewal by Anderson. Ms. How?
I'd make a motion to approve the general business license for Oscar Slute Garcia for renewal by Anderson. It's been approved by unnecessary parties.
That's a motion. We have a second. Second. Roll call.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
The next up again is Dylan Downing. Ms. How?
I'd make a motion to approve the general business license for Dylan Downing for renewal by Anderson. It's been approved by unnecessary parties.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Roll call.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
And the last one is Nicholas. I believe that's Mola. President, I make a motion that we approve a general business license of Nicholas Mola solicitation through renewal by Anderson. We have a second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Okay, now moving on. Discussion of my council board other than action, junkyard license, C and B scrap LLC, DBA, Liam's Motor Box, located at nine five five, I am in the road, flat sixteen lot zero zero eight. This is a fund correct? This is a transfer, license transfer correct?
Yes.
So, this is a little scheme. Could I be online by asking for the building inspector, advisors on this? I'm not familiar with it. I am familiar with the area. I've seen junkyard, but I'm not really that comfortable really.
You can, Mr. President. That's in the front of the council president's address, walk to the site visit. There's a lot of detail in here. Sometimes we miss a lot of the detail. But it was reviewed by the building inspector, Harry Anderson, in July twenty-eight, twenty-eight for compliance to zoning. So it's all set, but you could have him go out there and look at environmental or any other concern, not you individually or anybody from the council could request that he goes out there and have him do a cycle off to see if everything is in proper order. But if he did sign off on it, he didn't do it. Yeah. And it is an existing sound slot.
Anybody? Are there comments on this? Any concerns or anything? No? Is there a motion to approve the advocate for the business license for the C and B scrap at nine five five, I am in the road?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve a scrap no, it's called junkyard license for a C and B scrap LLC at nine fifty-five, I am in the road. It has been signed off by all appropriate bodies.
Is there a second on that? A second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
No.
Okay, it's moving on. Whole business, actually, before we go to whole business, I should, you want me to bring you up?
Yes.
Okay, you got it. We're gonna move on with that. Not to eat, I'm gonna make big work. If you go to eat a new business, and the special my council board other than action on increasing the funds from account number one dash one two zero dash six zero zero ancillary equipment for a new fire truck.
Mr. President, I just wanted to touch base with this. This is something ancillary equipment that we require for new purchase. We mentioned company that receiving sometime in March. This particular request is for the radio equipment for the truck, radio and the digital vehicle repeater that we've run for it, and also the jaws of life. In the next meeting, council, I believe it was on the twentieth, we're going to be requesting the hose that we need for that as well. I didn't have to properly hold it. I need to be ready for this. So this is just the start of just the, some of the equipment that we need to put that truck in service.
Any amount is fifty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
Correct for these two items, three items.
Just to frame it, something from the third party bill, incorrect?
That's correct.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
Mr. President?
Ms. How?
We'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the radio equipment from Motorola Solutions in the amount of twenty-two thousand two hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents, as well as the jaws of life from Fire Medic Supply Company in about thirty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars for the new fire truck that we received in March. This total of fifty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-two thousand thirty-eight cents will become third party billing.
Yeah, it's a motion, but second.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Remember, back up to, I'm a vibe of old business. Discussion of my council board other than action, update of municipal building review task force. Mrs. Nocher, am I seeing you out there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Hold on, hold on, we're gonna read the line. All right, go ahead. Try it now.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so this will be really quick. The town's architect, Tekton, is finishing up the final report and prepping for the joint meeting with the town council and municipal building review task force, which is scheduled for six forty-five PM on September twenty-seventh. So I guess we'll see you all there. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Nocher? Thanks, Mr. Nocher.
No problem. Thank you.
Special my council board other than action, update of how old review committee. Mr. Carver, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do, just a few. So we met last Thursday. Winston and Samson end up coming here and presenting to us the overall property lines of Halliwell, and they also built in where the wetlands are. And one of the large takeaways that we got from it is essentially where there's already land clearing and structures there, that's really where we're limited. Meaning that when you look at the thirty-plus acre plot of land, there's really not much that we can do outside of what's already been cleared. We could probably push the parameters a little bit. But when you look at the wetlands and some streams that are flowing through the property, we're very limited on the space. Even if we were to assume that all the buildings would no longer be there, we're really just dealing with the land that's already cleared. So that was one big takeaway. The other thing that we discussed was we're going to be having a presence at the unconfessed where we are going to blow up some of the some of the maps, some of the the pictures that they provided to us, so that as people are coming by within the town, they'll be able to see that limitation and ask questions if they have any. And that's all we talked about.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Carver? Thanks, Dave. See, discussion my council board other than action on Whipple Bridge on Blackstone North Smithfield Line at St. Paul Street. I put this on the agenda. Shortly, not that long ago, we had another, another truck that got stuck underneath the bridge. And a couple of days after that happened, Gail and I, me from the zoning board, reached out to me and she came up. She shouldn't originate this idea, but she, she spotted this idea being used in Massachusetts and she, she did a little homework and she presented it to me. And Gail, you want to tell us what it is? You want to come on up and I think it's a fantastic idea. So anyway, so after she discussed it with me, I called the administrator, who was actually already on top of it, working with the administrator, the town manager from Blackstone. So you'll be able to add a little bit to.
As you know, I do a lot of research in anything I look at. The blanket, they call that a blanket. It's a blanket that's hanging off of a light station, and it has tubes hanging down. So if the truck is eleven foot eight, it's going to hit the tubes. And they're going to hear that before they get to the bridge. I called Mass DOT, I called New York DOT, I've gotten in touch with Texas DOT. They've had success, but then they've had problems with kids going through the blankets. They get a high truck, they're going to start going through the blankets back and forth. I did more research. I talked to a few police officers in Blackstone, and I talked to a couple in North Smithfield. The EMS, especially the fire department, have a problem with the blankets because of the ladders and the height of the trucks. If the blanket was put right before the bridge, it's still going to be on the Blackstone line. So this is something that we'd have to talk to the town of Blackstone for. If you would have this blanket way ahead even before St. Paul Church, they'd still be able to go into the church parking lot, which he doesn't mind doing. I saw a really good sign that said, stop. Get out and measure your truck. I mean, lately, people are just not paying attention to the signs. They're either on their phone, doing something, and not paying attention to the signs. So you can have as many signs as you want. Blackstone has a sign on their first bridge. Letters are at least twelve inches high. And if you can't see that from a mile away, you're wrong. But yeah, it's still happening. The EMS that I talked to said that it's kind of equal. When the trucks go in the Blackstone side, the first bridge is eleven foot five. So they can go underneath it, but then when they get to the dip, it's eleven foot eight. So they get caught on the North Smithfield, they see the North Smithfield side. So they're having fun. They went through the town council, they went through the town administrator, they had meetings in Blackstone. I don't know what they came up with yet. I like the idea of the blanket right before St. Paul Street, St. Paul Church. I don't believe Elizabeth Street is after that. That would hinder the fire trucks from knowing how to move the street. I don't know. I'm not sure.
It is.
It is.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
So I did see the ones in Texas. Instead of them made out of aluminum pipe, they were made out of the weights, the plastic weights that were held down. It's very heavy stand inside, and they were plastic. So it didn't dent any of the trucks that went by. And it just made a heck of a lot more loud sound than the tubes did. What happened with the tubes, they said, the city of Worcester has several of them, and they've had a lot of success with them right before the low bridges. New York has them right before their low bridges. But they have a way where they can have a truck group where they can get off. So it would be an emergency truck group. The officer in Blackstone that I talked to said that the best place would be to turn around at where the complexes in Blackstone. So I don't know what they're up to. I know they're going to have a town meeting pretty soon. About that, is that right, Paul?
Yeah, it is, Gail. I have a few. Just, you've covered excellent. I said a few other points that I got when you're completing.
I, that's all I can find out. Like I said, I am all for the blanket right before St. Paul. That's the only thing that would be that we could do it.
Why not sooner, why not sooner, Mendon Road?
That's actually, they have a way out, and they're not, they're not patient for it.
So then again, you have, you have the fire trucks that are going to be going down St. Paul Street. So you have to be considerate of, I don't, absolutely, I don't, I was, chief was here. I know Blackstone said they didn't want any of the blankets on their main street. Where would have been a perfect place for one. But I had seen, I had pictured in front before me men in row. But then again, the fire trucks. Kind of consider the buyer, I don't know how high they are. But it is a, it works very well all over the United States. It is used in fifty states, this blanket.
Because you can make a sign in as big a letter as you want. The reality is, is these truck drivers are not paying attention to the sign. They're using their phones and their GPS, which is telling them this is the way to go. We have the same issue at the Old Town Hall. They can have been turned. The trucks aren't even supposed to be there. They continue to do attractive trailers. And I see it, I see it just like people see it in Blackstone. I see it from in Sockit. On Main Street, next to chance, at least once a month, there's a truck. He's either stuck or he's stopped there and then trying to get him out of there. And I see them at the back, all the way up to the stadium, to turn around and go on the main street to get out of there. Because they get stuck. That's what I was saying. If you wait till they get to Elizabeth Avenue, how are they going to get out? You know, a fifty-three foot truck, how's he going to get out?
And Mendon Road is such a steep slope. So if you have a tractor trailer truck that's got to climb that hill, it's going to be, I'd rather them climb that hill, make it noise, and be intrusive to residents and periodically than jamming up the bridge and halting interstate commerce, because that's exactly what happens.
Yes.
So you know, you have folks coming in from Black, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island to do business, people from Rhode Island or Massachusetts, commuters, people, parents going to different events with their kids, because we all know it's a nightmare in the mountains. So something to look, we can possibly look for increasing fines, substantial fines when someone hits that bridge, because they pass through one. I like that picture to some of the discussion I've had with Dory Beckgale, who was the manager of Blackstone. She was appointed early August, a couple of days in, I gave her call, at Buckhamer. And I said, no, we have a promise, she's aware of it. So as of last week, in speaking with Dory, she informed me that Massachusetts Department of Transportation has created more signage, going to be more impactful. And they are going to transfer, or probably by this point have transferred to the state of Rhode Island, do what could sign into the, we can put signage up. But sign, sign everywhere, sign, because it's, it's, I mean, honestly, these truck drivers, I think, they're counsel that they're using GPS, they're using Waze, they're using all this type of stuff to serve a bit and get around. Meanwhile, our residents, Blackstone residents, are suffering tremendously because of some moron that doesn't have the height of their truck, at least quote me, moron.
Yes. They just don't want to read. But you know, when you go with the times, I really agree with the fine. And the officer and sergeant said, yeah, you know, everybody knows how to hit the pocket. We'll hit it big.
Yes.
Five to ten thousand dollars. They know those numbers. Yeah, if you say five hundred on the E, you know. But get a really big fine when they hit this bridge.
You think that? I don't know, fines, it has to be good. It's not like they, they're going to go for it. Like if they go, if it was a hundred dollar fine, they'd go for it. They, nobody wants to share the top of the truck, so I don't know if the fine is the answer. I think, your idea is the answer with the.
I like the idea. I like the idea to, you know, stop, if you don't know. But they had even talked about speed bumps, you know, three-foot speed bumps, like, okay, well, that's going to kill the rescue and the, and the engines, so.
I like your idea, too.
Do we know how often these occurrences happen?
So far, now they're going off.
I never go in that areas.
Yeah, so far, they've been occurring almost once every couple of months.
Okay.
And that, yeah, and it, I mean, it's, it's getting worse. And I talked to, when I talked to the officer, I said, who's getting worse? Most fulfilling.
I was just asking.
And he said it's even now.
Come on, please. I think the administrator is right. It's ways. It's, it's the GPS, it's guiding these people right through. I like, I don't listen to my GPS.
They were also happy to hear, the officers were also happy to hear that our administrator would touch the Blackstone.
That is a statement, and it's like, right?
That's.
That creates another issue as far as getting something done on it.
Mass DOT told me that Winston can do whatever they want. They can, they'll supply the signs, but they can't make up what they want. They can put up their own kind of signs if they want. So that's Massachusetts. I wrote to around DOT, and I haven't got anything back. But Blackstone told me that they were going to be taking care of the signage on North Smithfield side. That's what I was told. I don't know if that's true, but they said they would be doing that.
Through Massachusetts Department of Transportation, signs have been prepared. They're supposed to be going to around the Department of Transportation. As far as installation, hopefully, Rindout can do it. If not, we have a very capable Department of Public Works can do that. But I prefer the state do it, the state road. We have, we have issues with state roads now. We've just kind of rectified the situation. Who's paying for streetlights on state roads? Well, the state is going to apply our application. One of the few communities that have actually purchased the lights, some of them are on a leasing program, so they can't transfer. Some of the communities can't transfer to the state. We're, we're ready to go. We've already submitted that application for all of our major roads. Now the other question becomes sidewalks. Business of the sidewalks, annihilation of sidewalks and state roads. So some places, we don't have sidewalks. So it's going to be a slow process, but we're watching and trying to get these things to develop a little more quickly.
Well, I have all confidence in our highway department to put our blankets up in the right place.
Gail, that day, it was your responsibility to do this, but in your studies, did you happen to come across what a blanket would cost?
No, because they use those scrap metal that would stand there.
Okay.
So, but I mean, if you look at one of those weighted ones.
How much can it be?
They're twenty-three dollars on the other one.
Yeah.
And then you get the chain, and then you're in the light scan. So it really isn't going to cost, I think labor intensive would be to put it in.
Right.
So, Mr. President, to revisit the fine situation, we're tying up a lot of first responders, police and fire at that bridge along with Blackstone. So there should be some type of payback for those hours of of those. So that's, that's why, you know, I'll, I'll take a look into that, see what we can do in conjunction with the state to get fines raised. And then you can go back into a fund. We'll figure that out, just since we have fund twenty twenty-four, sixty different funds throughout the town. Maybe we can come up with a fund that we can allocate to police and fire for the time on the job because of someone not heeding the signs.
Yeah. You know, fortunately, it's not a, it's not a road. It's a abandoned railroad trestle. It's pretty sturdy, because it does damage to the truck and not the trestle. What was it, three months ago in Boston, that truck driver went under the bridge and got stuck? He damaged the bridge. And they're going to find over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they're going to fix the road.
Okay.
Because they figured out what it did. And so fines can be, can be affected because you're removing the cost that we're occurring. Because they can't be.
I just want to, it sounds like a great idea, but I think if we're going to look at it, I think we should be looking at it more at the beginning of St. Paul Street, because now we're going to be sending trucks up Mendon Road. We're going to be putting wear gear on Mendon Road and going down Mendon Road on the other, on the other exit. I don't even know how a truck could. make that, that'll be another issue, trying to turn onto is that one forty-six A? Right. But I think we should be thinking more one forty, like up at St. Paul, St. Paul Street. And just not even having them go down this road, because why would we want trucks to be going through?
Well, you have businesses for an analogy, they need.
Well, it's one thing if they gotta, if they have to go to a business, but we, I don't think we want them going through a neighborhood that's gonna be ruining the road. And, you know, sending them up Mendon Road, I don't really think that's the answer either. I mean, it's, it's great that we wanna stop them, but I don't think sending them through the neighborhood would be the answer either.
No, you're right, but there are businesses.
I understand, I think they're going through those.
They must get traffic trailer that's a little bit.
What you're getting with the North Smithfield fence. North Smithfield fence is right down the road. We also have the other businesses.
Right, but they're gonna be able to come out, they're not gonna go through the, you know, like they're gonna make the delivery and they're gonna come back out. We just don't, we wanna keep them away from going down to the other.
So you would say have a blanket after the businesses. Because the businesses do end at some point.
As long as there's a way that they can turn around and.
That would be Mendon Road, I check.
See, that, I don't think that would be the answer, it's Mendon Road. Because now we're gonna be ruining the road, because we have trucks going, you know?
We do anyway. But now they're getting stuck under the bridge.
Right, right. But what we're gonna be doing is we're really forcing them to take Mendon Road, so it's gonna be used even more for heavy trucks. I, I just think we need to try and think of another way that we can have them come out of that situation rather than going up Mendon Road.
Oh, I wouldn't want them on Mendon Road. Oh, absolutely not. But that would, that would absolutely be like no open entrance, if you're.
Right, that's what we're talking about, is that would be the only way for them to turn around, to go up Mendon Road, I don't think we wanna push that into having the trucks coming up Mendon Road all the time.
The only trucks that would be going up in the road would be seven or maybe eight, if that would hit the bridge. It's not gonna be heavy traffic, you know, trucks that can make it on the bridge, because you don't wanna go on the road.
Seven or eight more, yeah, it's gonna be Mendon Road, and it's gonna be doing very.
The town has one, you can't go to that bridge. We own trucks that can't go into that bridge.
There's a lot of U-4 trucks that can't. And then you have the people that don't know what the size of the U-4 trucks are. So if you have something to make them aware of what they're driving.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have signage at the beginning of St. Paul Street?
Yes, we do, there is that. It's, it's bad, it's all, it's it's right at Little Benwell. Yes, is a sign, it's the international sign of bridges for the Truckers Association. It has the one-foot eight on it, and it also has where the bridge is St. Paul Street. There's also a sign that is across the street from the Old Spur Development. And it has one-foot eight, and it has St. Paul Street on it. And the signs are all the way down St. Paul Street, and it tells you, but again, people aren't gonna be looking at the small triangle, I mean, diamond signs, they're not figuring out.
I mean, maybe we can try some of the signs, like Mass has stop signs that, that like, in their solar power. Maybe we can look into something like that, just to try and get someone's attention before we start.
Well, that's one of the ideas I had, I had, was stop. You know, you have to stop and measure your truck. And actually, I was on St. Paul Street, and I did see an eighty-wheeler, and I don't know, I didn't stop, but usually with a big truck like this, he pulls right into St. Paul, and I saw him, I measured his truck. And he turned around and went back. So that's the other thing you're gonna get too. If you're gonna get up Mendon Road, they're gonna be going back. So the GPS is gonna have to tell them to go through Sockit.
We've amended to roads, and they come down the back of Sockit.
So I mean, it, it just depends on where you want to put the blanket. I mean, to me, it would be right before St. Paul Street.
So they probably can't even that, you know, go on the road, you know?
But just in the same vein, what we were discussing, and it's not on the agenda, but I, I took a ride through Billville today. And they do signs right. They have traffic signs, they have the radar displays, this is your speed. Then they have the blinking lights telling you what the, it, it's very impressive if they do that.
Let me see what Mass guarantee and standards are, I will, so.
They're doing that all through, you know, my two separate, they use that type of sound. They're like in the booms.
Even the flashing lights don't always work. They're rolled up on Sockit, they're just, they get, it's constantly, the lights get broken from the trucks. It's, it's just.
Well, I, in conversation with manager of I D O, I told her that I'd be happy to go before council, lend support for them. She said, I'm coming, I'm ready, this is very, very friendly. But definitely, we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have a great relationship with Blackstone. I don't see why we can't solve this problem.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Edward.
Discussion by council, both over the action, council rules regarding live stream meetings. If you look in your packet, we're provided with the rules that we, as a group, came up with at the last meeting. The solicitor went through and he kind of straightened them out a little bit. And he's provided this, these rules and unpack it, which is basically what we discussed in the last meeting. I'd like to continue the discussion. Does anybody have anything, as you read this, is there anything that anybody is objected to? Any objections or sees anything on it that they like or don't like? Any comments? Before we adopt them?
No, I think the solicitor, he captured what we, what we discussed and what we, what we give them for guidance on what we're gonna perform to, to track for us, I think he did a good job.
Anybody else have anything you want to add to this? Because I'll be honest, and I, I mentioned it at the last meeting, and I'm not, I don't totally disagree with what Mr. Oger was saying at the beginning. I, I, I understand why, why we wouldn't have, I understand why we wouldn't have Zoom participation at public hearings. And I don't know if you've heard, but the reason why we wouldn't do that is because if we scheduled a public hearing, we have experts, we have lawyers, we have all the stuff learned, that somebody can claim, oh, this is a technical issue. And then all of a sudden, now the public hearing is not good, we're gonna reschedule. So I understand that, so we wouldn't have hearing, you know, Zoom participation or public hearings. If everybody's comfortable with, with these, I, I just would like to point out that I would at least ask DJ, how involved would that be to have Zoom continue just for open forum?
Well, we'd have to create two different meetings. Because with the way our machine, the machine is set up, because I was gonna try to do simultaneous Zoom meetings. With a Zoom meeting with YouTube tonight, but there's two different settings on the machine, but one for YouTube and one for doing Zoom. And you would not be able to do two at the same time, so you'd have to schedule two separate meetings, one is Zoom, and then one live streaming on YouTube.
Well, my question though is if we didn't do live stream, we just didn't continue Zoom, we're only allowed public participation. I'm just throwing it out there, I already had, just had the conversation, putting it out there. What if we didn't? We didn't do live stream, we did Zoom, but only allowed participation during open forum?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you, you'd absolutely keep doing, just do Zoom, absolutely. You just have to do the, only do the open forum as back and forth. And then anything else would have to be understood in the, the rules, that the public hearings would have to be in person.
You wouldn't even acknowledge everything, you're right. All right, is anybody, you have any commentise and say about that, that point, right?
I just know that the difficulties that we've had trying to run a Zoom meeting with public participation, we're not set up for that. Much as the AG may want us, they say, this is great, the AG's not paying our bills, and they're not buying our state government to do that. And we all know that the problems that we've had trying to interact this board with people on the Zoom side of things, it, it's just not, it's not working. And yet, we have that problem, and all I can hear, we can't hear. And so to me, to me, it's not, it's, it's not a good thing to have. And if you've been watching, we do have Zoom meetings in Rhode Island. We don't have a lot of participation, we might have one or two people out there, maybe. That if they had to come here, they would probably come here. It's not like we have forty, fifty people that are watching, that are, that are demanding it, they wanna see our meetings, it's just not happening.
But we are gonna have that topic eventually, that's gonna spike interest in a meeting, and people will wanna participate, if it, you know, it's gonna happen.
Right here, they can be here, come to the arena.
So CJ, I'm wondering if, is there a way to have, you know, Zoom, you can either click on the link and connect audio with your computer and, you know, kind of get integrated into the whole Zoom meeting. But then they also give a number of Zoom calls, so if you don't have webcam, let's say for example, you can just call in, and that kind of feeds into the whole process. You know, I'm wondering if, if you know, if that would be an option, where we just provide them with a number to call that will feed into the system. As opposed to tying in visual and audio. Because that's really where I think we've had a lot of technical difficulties. You know, I'm not saying I'm a solid problem, because I agree, we don't really have that many people that attend the open forum to begin with, unless there's a specific issue. Which, you know, sometimes it may not be relating to town hall itself, it may be something else. Like for example, when we were putting together the garden, the community garden. You know, we discussed that, and now that's kind of its own thing, where somebody had, something where they wanted to voice an opinion. It may not necessarily be with town council, it might be with, you know, another committee or another area.
Well, and I'm just sitting here, because like, people in Zoom could hear me on, on the laptop here. So just to let you know, most of the, the audio problems, let me back up a little bit. Zoom, as you know, when we were meeting all individually in Zoom, when you're meeting individually, it's so much easier. It's, it's set up that way, you can each participate remotely. And you're not having the audio visual, mostly the audio problems we're having is have, trying to run one camera, one feed with you, five, six, seven people trying to feed into one feed. And that's where the audio problem goes out into the, out into the stream. And that's where the problem's coming from. It's, it's more the setup of the, the audio visual in this room. It's, and I'm not saying it, it's wrong, it's just the way the, the machine that they brought in was made for YouTube, a YouTube stream, so all the microphones, as you are all talking, will feed into the machine and then go into YouTube, so everyone will be able to hear. There won't be any feedback, there won't be any it shouldn't be any audio or video problem, it's just basically a live stream. To get back to your question, Councilman. Yeah, there, there is, when you sign on to Zoom, it gives you two options, you can either sign on with your computer audio, or you can sign on with a phone audio. And I don't think that's the issue, it's the issue pretty much of the, the logistics of the room, the room setup.
But the meetings are not I'm talking about open forum, so if it's not working, it's not working, we can continue the meeting, it's not a public hearing, so if it's not working, unfortunately, that's the way it goes sometimes, and we can move on. If it was for a lot of public hearings, then we have a problem, so I, I just don't see the harm in just letting open forum go on, so that's just my opinion. But I would want five, so, if you guys are you honest, what do you want to do, to go forward with these rules? Anybody have any comments?
If we leave it, if we leave it open that the open forum is part of the meeting, then it has to be part of the meeting. Under that Zoom, under that Zoom background. And if we have a problem, then we can't have the meeting. You'll run into that, and you'll run into those issues. That's part of the issue. We, we faced it a couple of times, where we had to stop the meeting because it wasn't working right. And this would be no different, if, if, if we include this part into, into the live streaming case, and then we have a technical difficulty, then we gotta stop the meeting.
That's a good point, I mean, that's, that's a great point. Mr. Galios, are you up there?
I'll just ring him up, Mr. President.
David, can you hear me?
I can.
Alright, so the, the point that Mr. Vadne brought up was if we allow Zoom participation just for open forum, and for whatever reason, the system went down, and we were not allowed to, or we're not able to have the Zoom people on Zoom participate, would at that point then we'd have to cancel the meeting, or because, or would we be able to just say, you know, it's unfortunate that the system's down, we're gonna move on?
Well, I think you have to would have to change the rules to indicate that if the system goes down for technical difficulties, the meeting will continue, including without open forum. As you know, open forum is never a section where the council takes any legal action. Nobody, nobody can comment in an open forum about something that you're taking legal action on. If it's a matter on the agenda that has a public hearing, then theoretically, you would have a scheduled hearing. I guess the one issue that Councilman Vadne is raising that could cause a problem is what about if somebody is not bringing up, if somebody was to bring up a subject in open forum that's on the agenda without public hearing? That the issue?
You lost me on that one.
In other words, people come and speak to you on open forum about something that's not even on the agenda. I wanna talk to you about the Little League field tonight. It's not even on the agenda, so if they couldn't speak about it, it's not the end of the world, I could go to the next form, open forum in two weeks. But what about if you have an item on the agenda that doesn't have any public comment associated with it? And I come to the open forum, and I was gonna speak about item number six?
So Mr. Iglosi, are we referring to, are we referring to when Mr. Oger came in during the open forum and talked about item D, which is regarding the live stream meetings?
That's exactly an example of that. That's, that's the example, right? Theoretically, you would not have heard from him if the computer went down and the only way he could get on was open forum. You would not have heard from him before you're making this decision now. Even though it doesn't require a public hearing.
Yeah, so if that went down, we would be in a little bit of a line, is what you're saying.
Right, because, because, because we're back to the issue of, I mean, unless, again, you, you, you notify the public that open forum, that, that if there's technical difficulties, the meeting will go on, even if public forum, you know, is unable to go forward. That's, that's the issue, you have to, you have to put a big notice on, on meeting on every agenda that, you know, participation in person, you know, is preferred. And failure to participate in person during open forum in the event of a technical difficulties will not prevent the council from going forward on any matter that's on the agenda. Now we'd have to change that notice to be clear on that, and I think we'd be okay. This is, you know, that issue is, is new territory. I can't find an open meetings case that has answered that question that you're, you're presenting, so let's be clear on that. But the idea is, if you're giving the public the opportunity to speak, and you're letting them know that they should come in person, and that open forum available by live stream, by Zoom will be available, provided technical circumstances allow. The public is on notice that they are taking their chance, that's our argument, right? They're on notice, that if the computers go down, the meeting's going forward.
Yes, so I, I, I think I, I don't, I think in many ways, I think that, you know, we, it's okay to be the first in some things. Personally, I, in my opinion, I don't think that we should be the guinea pig for this. Could potentially cause us some issues.
I think they get, they get the good, the good thing that the live stream it.
So that people can see what we're doing at least. Is, is, is the way, is the way to answer this. And we have that capability that was, that was set up for the room. Zoom, Zoom is a great tool when everyone is in their own house. It were, that's what it was set up for. It's not set up for public meetings. It's not set up for public forums. People are using it because they had no other choice. There's no other vehicle out there to do it. So everyone was kind of pushed into using Zoom and yet we've run into problems and so do a lot of other people. I think live streaming it, making that commitment to live streaming it, so people can watch what we're doing, have that opportunity. It will work fine. It works, but it goes up to the YouTube thing. And yet we have the, we have the caveat, if we have technical difficulties, the meeting continues. So if something happens that, that stalls that, we've got that caveat to it. People can watch our meetings from home, from the comfort of their home. We can still continue to do that now. But they're doing it now, but we give them that option.
If I may, Mr. President, you, you could, I think everybody's observed the audio uh echo we had with Mr. Galios. It was that one and a half second delay with Zoom. The live stream from YouTube, you don't have that problem. Um, what's the old expression, no, no good deed goes unpunished? You know, uh, we're trying to figure this out. I, I, I think Mr. Carbo may be right in saying that why do we need to be the guinea pig on this? But if you think this, this is something you can address it to next time to the meeting. If you want to go back to Zoom, we can do it. If you want to stay with Zoom, we can do it. If you want to go with YouTube, the council can do this. It's a fair decision. But I, I just, when I was listening to uh the echo I was saying to the others, it's quite uh, it's distracting. Not, not as, I think we've got us into it because we've been doing Zooms. We're, we're used to it. So now people take the notes. What did they say? Just wait a second.
I, I, I hear what I totally agree with everybody, but uh, and it's the most overused word in politics. I hate the word, it's transparency. But it does give us, it does make us more transparent if people have access. That's what it's all about, access. That's all I'm talking about. And if they have access from their home to make their comments. I think I, I just like the idea of people, people being able to uh reach out to the council without having to get in the car and drive there if they, for whatever reason, if it's a little snowy, if it's too cold or whatever the reason. If this, then they can reach out to the council and, and be heard from the safety of their home. That's what they chose.
You'll have the clarification, it should be a technical difficulty. The live in-person meeting will continue. Correct? We, we, uh, I think that effort's been made to make it fully accessible for people to hear and see, maybe participate, but that we are understanding that it's technical difficulties. Council meeting shouldn't stop, we should proceed because if you're on that next road, we can say we might have a lot of things going on.
Well, not during open forum.
Uh, even in open forum, if open forum goes out, we're gonna have to stand up. There's, there's a technical problem.
Yeah, because it's Zoom, but it was, it's not an option uh for the, for the reason that we explained uh for public hearings, because it could shut down, someone could just shut down a public hearing by saying they had technical difficulties. I'm just, this, I'm speaking of stripped of open forum.
But if you I don't want to, I want to belabor this, but if you believe that in order to have more transparency, we need to let the people participate from their home, then it needs to be the whole meeting. It has to be all or nothing. They can either, they can either watch us and, and see what's going on by live streaming and come here if they want to participate. But if you want to participate through Zoom, it has to be a whole meeting. You can't just pick and choose which place you want to let them participate. That's why I'm thinking, I don't, I want them here. If you want to participate, come here. And, and you can, you can watch a live stream and you'll hear it fine. You can see what's going on. You can always come back to the next meeting and voice concerns or, or, you know, about what we know or whatever, because we can always revisit things.
Anybody else that they can say?
I'm gonna say this quickly and I'm looking at you when I say it. I remember this room, people showed up. If they showed up for everything that was being performed that night. And that was to me, uh, a commitment to this town. And it, it, you know, it's busy, it's busy. Guess what? We got kids in school, we had kids doing this and we still pay. So if it means that much, I've seen and you want transparency, you want to make a commitment to, to the town, plan the day before. So when your kids come home, food's ready, zap, you got it. Uh, maybe someone over, your husband doesn't come, you could, the wife comes and wipes the husband or the other partner, whoever, and guess what? They can move out. If there was a sale sometime, you'd get here.
What's it going?
All right, if nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion to adopt the rules that were provided in our package by Mr. Galios that we voted, that we discussed last week.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we amend our rules to include live streaming of open meetings, which will be A, live streaming for town council zoning board and planning board. Town will provide live streaming for open meetings and town council zoning board review and planning board, whatever fee school. YouTube, Zoom, or some other technology, technical difficulties that occur during the live stream of an open meeting, the open meeting will continue to proceed as scheduled without live streaming. Public must be physically present to participate. Members of the public, applicants, petitioners, experts, et cetera, who want to participate in open meeting in any fashion must be physically present at the meeting. Members of the public, applicants, petitioners, experts, et cetera, will not be allowed to participate in open meeting, revoked by offering comment, testimony, or other remarks in virtual meetings. No other board, commissions, or committees will be live streamed except as specified above. The town will not provide live streams for any other board, commissions, or committees. Technical difficulties, if technical difficulties occurred during any live stream, the open meeting will continue to proceed as scheduled. The meetings of the town council zoning board and planning board will be live streamed on the town's YouTube page, most of, most of the field town meetings, and then there's, there's a web address for that.
Well, I want to thank you for not making me read that. Thank you. Okay, that's a motion. Wait a second. Okay, uh, Roco, please.
Miss Al, Mr. Corovado?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Bureau of God?
No. Okay, move on. Good business. Discussion by council, what are the action and payment of invoice? Uh invoice number nine zero zero two one five five seven to STV slash EPM. Mr. Jesus?
Yes, this invoice came from the school department. It was approved by the school committee and the superintendent and the facilities director, Mr. CP, and also the chairman of the school committee. The invoice is from STV and it says the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. President, I make a motion to approve invoice number nine zero zero two one five five seven from STV EPM. It is seven twenty-six, twenty-one, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Is there a motion? Wait a second.
Second.
Second, uh, Roco, please.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God? I'm sorry, Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Discussion by council, what are the action on tax penalty adjustments? Mr. Jesus?
Yes, um, document in front of you is five pages. The first page is um what I've been doing all along with the scale of reducing um penalties for accounts that are, have, are doubtful in collecting. Um, the total is, for the proposed adjustment is seven thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. And then page two through five is all of the, all the deceased taxpayers that the tax collection agency um um, reviewed and um sent over to us and we confirmed. Um, and that's a total of twenty-seven thousand six hundred fifty dollars and twenty-one cents. And then the first page also has the, all the um fiscal year totals up to date. And um councilwoman House asked requested, so for fiscal twenty-two total tax adjustments, total thirty-one thousand nine twenty-sixty-five. And those, and those are all um deceased taxpayers. And the fiscal twenty-two total penalty adjustments is eleven thousand sixty-six thousand eight cents, and those are for penalty adjustments.
So uh, is you looking for us to approve the nine oh twenty, uh, not according to, is it?
No, no, no. It would be, the proposed adjustments for the penalties would be seven thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. And the proposed tax adjustment for the deceased would be the twenty-seven thousand six fifty, twenty-one on page five.
Something interesting question. I know I ask this all the time, but do we know how far we are through this review that we're gonna keep getting these adjustments and penalty adjustments?
I do not know. Um, they send letters. I requested them not to send a letter in September because it was um payment quarterly payments and the growth house teams were kind of overwhelmed with um mail as it was. So I'm not sure. I didn't receive an email today. There was three deceased already on there. I haven't received any phone calls. So as of right now, there is nothing else, but I can't promise. Cause when they send out a letter, I have no calls.
Can we get some sort of a report from them, where they stand on, on, on all the records?
Yes, I did request that report already. I requested it before. I, I requested them to create a report for me showing what I sent to them in the beginning. What they collected. And then um what we, what they collected and what we've collected, because we've also collected funds too. Um, so I'm just waiting for that report. So as soon as they get that, I can hand back to you.
I can feel one.
I have one, just one question. Kind of seems, seems a lot, but we have twenty-seven thousand in motor vehicle tax. Some of these were long before you even died yet, and some of them are twelve years old, thirteen years old. How come there are estates that have to pay that when, when things go on?
I'm not sure about that. I don't know how probate law works. Um.
Just a question.
I, I don't understand. I don't know anything about probate law. Um, these are recommendations that came from the collection agency. I would imagine that they wouldn't know the law on that. I trust that they would, since they aren't using money for not collecting. Remember, they don't get any fees if they don't collect.
Right.
So it's their, it's, it's in their best interest to try to fight for this money, whether it's through paid probate law or estate or an estate. Um, I'm not sure.
I understand that, yes. So they're so, they're so old and, you know. But there was, there was, there was, there was some that, that are fairly recent, you know, three, four, five years ago. You would think that there are estates, when you go to set up.
Not everybody has an estate. There are some, some people, not everyone has an estate. Now, if you want to go further investigate that, then that would be another step that I don't even know, do we get an attorney to do that, to figure out they have an estate? I mean, I don't even know how that would work, to be honest. She says, wow.
The estates are not always open that long. They do close quickly.
So we have to move around and know that they were deceased right away.
Yeah, know that they, they were raised before.
Right, exactly.
Then you can put the motion and appropriate it.
And remember, we fill a year later.
Once it's closed, you can't go retro and, yeah, you keep the money.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion. I think uh Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the penalty adjustments recommended by the finance director in the amount of seven thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Wait a second.
Second.
Second. Roco, please.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Corovado?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
You know, the twenty-seven thousand. Good morning.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the tax adjustments in the amount of twenty-seven thousand six hundred fifty dollars and twenty-one cents as recommended by the finance director.
Roco.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Corovado?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Discussion by council, what are the action on abatements, supplementals?
Hi, good evening.
Oh, this is, yeah.
Hi.
Mr. St. George, you want to, want to take this?
Yeah, I'll take it. Um, so I'm presenting a batement in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents. And then a supplementals of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. St. George? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor in the amount of eight thousand six hundred ninety-five thousand seventy-five cents.
We have a second. Any discussion? Roco, please.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Corovado?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Bureau God?
Yes.
And then we have one on the last page.
President, I make a motion that we approve the supplemental tax bill, tax um bills in the amount of one thousand eight hundred twenty-three thousand seven cents as recommended by the tax assessment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roco, please.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Corovado?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to uh D. And the new business, discussion by council, what are the action and appointments for the commissions? Uh, we have uh one opening and a senior, the senior citizen advisory committee. Appointment of one member for completion of the two-year term ending on eleven thirty twenty-two. This is a town council appointment. Uh, as you can see in your packet, we have uh one application that was provided to us, and we do have one opening at this time. Uh Christine Charest, uh she had resigned her position due to the fact that she moved that time. Which created.
Ohio voted, yes. Keep the rules as it was.
And would they make a combination to his position?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to nominate.
He even brought back up a discussion that he, what he said.
Uh, I've reviewed her resume. She's both qualified and she's been active. And this is a part of a mission for uh that pertains to my group um for many years.
I would like to uh second that nomination of Mr. St. Obeck. Is there any discussion? Roco, please.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Corovado?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Complete that note by any, what happened, that we use, so to do. Okay, the next appointment is an appointment by the town administrator for the conservation commission.
Members of council, I have been wanting to appoint Kayla Massey to that position. Uh, she's been involved, been attending meetings. Um, that's my point.
Second then.
Uh, do you need us to vote on it, uh, Mr. Mr. George?
No, you were kind of going to add something the last time. Yeah, I don't think we should. Unless anybody had any participations, then down we can tap to discuss it. Uh, but that's the point that I.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
Also in the fact that you have two other folks uh stellar representatives, you might want to keep these for any availability that pops up in the future. I won't mention any of these because, you know, it's kind of, it's a public record, but you have two other uh folks that would fit in and have very uh broad skill sets.
Okay, thank you. As you know, openings do pop up and rolls from the end. Yeah, we already took care of uh the chief. Uh, discussion by council, what are the action on freezing and the national grid, the gas? Waiting for the feedback. Um, this is um um a situation where there's a new law in place, but when I gave the permits to. This is a situation where there's a new law in place, but when I gave the permits to National Grid in two thousand eighteen for the work on Getchell and O'Donnell and some of the streets, National Grid does not have to abide by the curd to curve, which is the new law. So all they have to do is basically mill and pave the limits that they didn't work on. So I know that my memo is a little worried. But these are two roads that in two thousand fourteen, when we had our study done, were questionable at best then. So now Getchell was totally torn up by grid. And the deal is that they will split, National Grid will split with us fifty-fifty. So I'll take Getchell first. Back in two thousand fifteen, our pricing for milling and paving Getchell was sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. That's in two thousand fifteen. I don't even have the pricing for that right now, so we anticipate that that will be much more than that. To do all of Getchell would cost us the five thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. So we would get all of Getchell done. Grid base half, we pay up fifty-nine hundred. O'Donnell is a different, a little different. Their limits were only two hundred and fifty square yards. And if we were to share that with grid, that would cost us three thousand two hundred and twenty-five. I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with O'Donnell, but what they did was when they come onto Getchell, they went this way on O'Donnell for that, that yardage, which leaves more of O'Donnell not touched, and going down the hill not touched. I had them priced out. I really believe that because these roads do need to be paved, this was an opportune time to do it. We're not getting any extra mobilization fees, and so our share would be the three thousand two hundred and twenty-five. All total would be sixteen thousand five hundred and twelve. If you put both of these roads together, we have an excess of twenty thousand dollars savings by doing these two roads, sharing grid. So I think it's a good opportunity. Moving forward, the new law takes effect with any work that they do, they're responsible for all the paving, any milling and paving they have. So be a little different. So I'm looking for permission to have hot could paving, which is on the master price agreement anyway, but their pricing is lower than the master price agreement because they're all working great, so operating great. So they're holding their price for us. They work in the socket, they're working the local base, so everybody's kind of jumping on it. So I'm looking for permission to have them move forward. They're getting ready to do it as soon as I can make a call. So just what questions are in the future then, because they have to go curb to curb. But as a project, if they happen to be working on a road that we would, that wouldn't be on our list to pay, and they're only doing up to, you know, two hundred and twenty, right on the second side road, we'd still have this opportunity maybe in the future to ask them how much to go continue for the whole road. Right, so let's take, let's take O'Donnell. We had splitting fifty-fifty with them for that small section. We wouldn't have to go fifty-fifty. They would have to do that section, but we'd be back in the same position we are right now. If we wanted to continue or if you rest in the road, that's our responsibility.
That's what I was here.
So the total cost to do these two roads is twenty-two thousand five hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the one we have. Yeah, and that's, that process is before, upon cooperation, they're putting it all together, so through the winter, we'll put that together in the spring.
Get ready.
Yeah, there's no problem at all with each thousand dollars.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the paving on Getchell Avenue and O'Donnell Avenue, the Hartford Paving in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents as recommended by the director of public works.
Motion second. Questions or comments, Mr. Enigus? Roll call, please.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Bad News?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to be real quick. I just want to make sure you get, discussion by Council on other action and improvements to capital plan, pump station analysis. Mr. Jordan?
Good evening, everybody. So this is a request from the store commission. Will we spend twenty-nine thousand three hundred and six dollars? We'd like to engage right here to do a comprehensive analysis of our nine pump stations and two metering stations. Right now, we have no comprehensive plan for evaluating the infrastructure that we have, and we need long-term plans, both high and low priority needs, to ensure that the sewer system can use the function at the high level for the townspeople. So we, back in July, we requested the right peers put together a proposal for us so that we could work with the superintendent, Mr. Comer, to do this comprehensive analysis. Basically, they would inspect all our pump stations, they'd do a capacity assessment in each pump station, see what it actually is at, and what we have to talk paper. They evaluate the needs of each pump station and the two metering stations, for long-term and short-term, help us plan for the needs of those stations so that we're not just reactionary, that we're being purposeful in our long-term planning, and we can factor that into the finances of the town. And prepare a raw report, which will present to the town council. We feel that since this really hasn't been done for our sewer system since they went in back in the seventies, early eighties, it's about time to have an overall assessment of where we're at, these stations. And just for that, this is different than the facilities plan update that we're looking at developing. There was a little confusion of the supervision of what this would actually entail. This would not touch that at all. This is completely different. This is our town's consumption, that actually hundreds of, the town's consumption will only
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the expansion of the condominiums.
Nothing at all. That would be a totally separate expense, sure, that we would undertake, that ever comes to fruition, or it gets brought back up.
Yeah, probably, it could be on the next agenda.
So I just have a question for the finance director. This company, Enterprise One, is
Yes.
There are enough funds to cover the surprise fund?
Yes. Yes, there is.
We're spending this
As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure, I don't have the budget in front of me, but I'm pretty sure this is already in the budget, in their budget.
We have a fifty thousand dollar budget.
Yes.
Particular line items, and we're looking to just be very proactive.
Yes.
I understand what you want to move. I understand what you're asking, and what we're making sure is that if we go forward and do this, and then we need to do that other piece to satisfy the EM that we're going to go for it, even though I don't want to. Do we have enough funds to do both?
What other?
Yes, we do. We have. So this project is approximately thirty thousand dollars. The other item that you're talking about, the facilities plan update, give the towns to show the entire burden, that's about sixteen thousand dollars. Our budget right now for that particular line is fifty thousand. It would make things a little tight for any other things that might pop up later in fiscal year, but we did talk about that at the commission meeting, and we can still be able to do both this fiscal year. I want, no, I agree. I just want to make sure that if we have to do both, that we have.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Mr. President, based on the recommendation of the store commission and understanding that we do have enough funds to finance our, I made a motion that we approve the work to write pairs to do a, an evaluation of our sewer system in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
It's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, just to confirm that this will be coming from the Enterprise One.
Okay, that's confirmed. Right again?
Oh.
She just wanted to Okay, any other questions for the store? Roll call, please.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Bad News?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the police department out there? Mrs. Luskey, what was this?
Yeah, the bit wrote, as I can say, there was a two-day interceptor, one from MHQ, the other one from Colomn, so bro. Fleet supervisor, the effects of government has recommended that we go with the two interceptors SUVs priced at fifty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars each, for a total of one hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I can throw that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Luskey on this? Is there a motion to approve the hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the two police interceptors?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve an award to bid to MHQ municipal vehicles for two SUV interceptors in the amount of fifty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars each for a total of one hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
It's a motion. We have a second. A second. Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Bad News?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes. Discussion by Council on other action and award a bid for a two thousand twenty-two Ram twenty-five hundred pickup truck. Public Works, Mr. Ben, yes? Sorry, go. I'm looking for your approval to purchase this two, two thousand twenty-two Ram twenty-five hundred pickup. The money would come out of the capital funding, which I believe was forty thousand dollars. This proposal is with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, the greater Boston Police Council, and MHQ. Small competitive bid. I'm recommending that MHQ be awarded this bid. Do we have any questions, Mr. Ben, guys? Motion approved? Okay, so the motion is the thirty-nine thousand to approve two thousand twenty-two Ram fifty-five hundred trucks of MHQ in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred one thousand and eight cents. Yeah, is there a second? Second for discussion?
Just one question. Why don't we go instead of staying like with one range of vehicle? Any reason for that?
We didn't want to go with what was our, the trucks just not good. For some reason, we had good luck with all the other Dodgers, the one tons. So as we sat down with the head mechanic with the format, it was kind of, I didn't care what they got, they went with the Dodgers, they had good luck with the Dodgers, so file package, so on.
I was just curious, why don't we have a next, it would make sense if we think two grid lines, if you have one type of vehicle, you know, we've been buying a lot of the same, big dump trucks are a lot of the same, that were even need parts, spare parts, and you don't have ten different spare parts on the two, you know.
That's, that's, we had good luck with the Dodgers. Any other questions? Okay, we have motion and second. Let's, roll call, please.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Bad News?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion of a jury? All in favor?